Okay, we're gonna get going now. Good evening, welcome to the October 8th zoning board of adjustment meeting. To my left is Mr. Carter-Fark, who's a deputy planning manager for the city of Nashua. Across the way, we have Mr. Nick Knackus, Mr. Jay Minkara, Mr. Robert Shaw, Ms. Estaphia Boris, Ms. Mary Ann McKay, who acts as our secretary, and I'm JP Boucher, acting as your chair tonight. This meeting is recorded by a written transcript, audiotape, and video. We ask that you direct all testimony to the microphone, and only one person speak at a time. If you don't have tonight's agenda, you'll find it on the back table in the rear of the auditorium. Tonight, we'll be hearing requests from deviations from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. I'll explain what a special exception is. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. The five criteria required for this board to grant a request for a special exception are: One, the requested use must be listed in the table of use regulations as a special exception. Two, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Three, the requested use will not overload any public water, drainage, sewer system, or any other municipal system such that other areas of the city will be subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare. Four, any special regulations for the use set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled. And five, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district of adjoining zones nor be detrimental to health morals or welfare of the residents of Nashua. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for the approval of a variance are: One, the variance will not be contrary to public interest; Two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed; Three, substantial justice is done; Four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; and Five, the literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the city of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear any and all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting board members are present at this meeting, and we have a quorum tonight. Any citizen has the right to contest a decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received from Mr. Fark in the city of Nashua planning department within thirty calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant the rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. You can contact Mr. Fark for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part is what we call the public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of this case. The order of testimony is as follows. First, the applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case. Then those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Then those in opposition with questions will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Then the applicant then has five minutes to speak in rebuttal. And finally, a representative, and only one person of those in opposition or with questions, will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. We ask that you please direct all testimony to this board and not to anyone in the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they have to be directed to the board, and we'll get them answered. The second part of tonight's meeting is what we call the public meeting. This is where the board debates the merits of this case, the merits of the case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. We ask that you please silence your cellphones. If you need to have a conversation, we'd ask you to step out in the hallway. Excellent acoustics in this auditorium so we can hear everything that you're saying from up here. Mr. Fark, is there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Does anyone have any questions before we get started? Okay, so tonight, we have six members. So the way we conduct ourselves is we will only have officially five voting members, but the sixth member has the ability and is welcome, obviously, to participate in our discussion. And also, when we go through the public meeting, they will also be on a discussion, they just won't vote. So they are an integral part of our meeting tonight. We will alternate the members. So the alternate members are Estaphia Boris, Jay Minkara, and Mr. Nick Akounas. So in the first case, it will be Ms. Estaphia Boris and Mr. Jay Minkara. On the second case, it would be Mr. Jay Minkara and Mr. Nick Knackus. And then on the last case, it will be Mr. Nick Knackus and Ms. Estaphia Boris. Unless any one of those recuse themselves from the case, that's how we'll go ahead. And again, the clerk will have that role already in place, so we'll have that noted. And if there's any questions as we go along as to who is actually voting, please ask, we'll clarify that for you. Okay, so we're all set to go? Okay, so we will call the first case to order, and that is, so we're gonna open the public hearing for owner Matthew LeBlanc, 49 Blanchard Street. The description is Matthew LeBlanc, owner of 49 Blanchard Street, Sheet 103, Lot 296, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach two feet into the ten-foot required front yard setback to construct a roof over an existing front deck. It's in the R9 district. Is anybody here to present that case? Come on up. So just give us your name and address, and we have your applications, just tell us what you want to do.
Okay.
Yeah, just to the mic, and just talking to the mic, because it has to be on record.
Okay, so what I'm doing-
Just your name and address for the record.
Matthew LeBlanc, 49 Blanchard Street, Nashua.
Okay, thank you.
So what I'm doing is I sided the house, and I was looking to do a farmer's porch off the front of it. And when I went to pull the permit to do so, I didn't realize that the setback was so close to the house. From the actual foundation to the curb, I believe I had twenty-four feet, and I didn't realize that there was that ten-foot setback. So I was allowed to do the front porch off the front, but what I'm looking to do now is put a roof over that to do like a farmer's porch to enclose it. Not enclose it, but just to kind of protect it from snow and such.
Okay, so that was the existing deck?
It's got a deck across the front.
Yeah, it was permitted before that. So the deck was previously permitted on this property, so again, you're just looking to put a roof over that?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Pretty straightforward. Is there anything else you want to add? Okay, are there any questions for the applicant? All right, so again, just for our edification, the roof you're putting on, you're just gonna come off the existing roof line and just gonna bring it over. There is no storage, there's no living space or anything like that?
Correct.
Nothing that you're building that would create anything like that?
No.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Minkara?
Just for the record, can you talk about the reasons for the roof and for the extension, the overhang?
For a couple of reasons. Part of it is just the look of it. I've always wanted, I've lived there my whole life, so I've always wanted a farmer's porch. But like I said, when I came into these issues with the setback, I was just gonna do a deck, and then as we went on, you know, you change your mind on what you want to do. But more or less, just to keep snow off of it, and like I said, just for the look of it, really. So safety, you know.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Okay, seeing none. I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Minkara?
It seems like a very straightforward request. They're able to, you know, to do initially the deck. Roofing it makes sense, you know, particularly in our climate. I think typically, you do want some shelter when you're approaching a front entrance. And the extension of the overhang, particularly with snow, I mean, seems to me to be reasonable. It's certainly a reasonable accessory use, or I should say, use related to your residential use, so I'd support it.
I'll also support too. We're not asking for any additional incursion to what's existing now. And again, it's a roof, it's, you know, like you said, would be something that you would probably see, so. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, and I think the other thing in the part of, you know, what this homeowner ran into, and I think a lot of people do, is oftentimes, there's that real difference between what the actual property line is and the curb for the roadway. And so in this case, it looks to like marked up here as nine feet. So there's a perception that there is more space there than maybe what is actually defined, but the chance of anything happening with this street ever probably getting widened or, you know, encroaching further and coming up closer to the house seems highly unlikely. And so I think just even the fact that it's maybe somewhat significant encroachment, I think by perception, it won't be. So I see that also as part of what is, at least to me, you know, further supports this case.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just to add one more point, but we also have the neighboring house encroaches further, so it would not be more significant, you know, encroachment than is true, you know, on this street current.
Thank you, Mr. Minkara. Any other discussion? Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Shaw?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owner Matthew LeBlanc. Address is 49 Blanchard Street, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach two feet into the ten-foot required front yard setback to construct a roof over an existing front deck. This variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of property. In this case, the house is already set very far forward in the property and very close to the front property line. And to even add a fairly narrow farmer's porch like this does have an encroachment of two feet into the setback. So it was also noted that the property line is nine feet inset from the curb of the street, so by appearance, it still looks like this is, will be setback further than the minimum requirement anyhow. It is within the spirit and tenet of the ordinance. There's been no testimony that there be any negative effects on property values of surrounding parcels, and I think the applicant believes that not only will it increase potentially the value of his home, but potentially for others. It's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served, and with that, I move to approve this area variance.
Seconded by Mrs. Boris. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's five to nothing. That motion passes. Congratulations, the motion passes. All right, good luck. Thank you. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number one.
Mr. Chair, do you just want to mention the thirty-day?
Oh, excuse me.
Sir?
Just a minor thing, there's a thirty-day window of appeal. That's where there'll be case, probably highly unlikely since you already have a deck, but just be aware, okay? All right? Thank you.
You have to wait thirty days?
You can apply for a permit, and we can actually issue it. We would just stamp it that says that you would be proceeding at your own risk in the next thirty days. But, you know, I don't foresee any issues with this.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. With that, I'll open case, the public hearing for case number two. Case number two is for Andrew Crocker, 15 Woodland Drive. Andrew Crocker, owner of 15 Woodland Drive, Sheet 53A, Lot 45, requesting a special exception from the land use code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit within an existing house. It's an R9 zone. Is anybody here to, come on up, just give us your name and address, and tell us what you want to do.
Hey, doing guys. Andrew Crocker, 15 Woodland Drive. I'm proposing to do an in-law in the basement. My mother is seventy-two, so I want to give her, and she rents currently, so I want to give her a place to go, and she's not able to kind of pay that rent anymore. And the building is gonna be existing. There is at least a four-car driveway currently, so there's gonna be no need to add a driveway or separate entrance. It already has a walkout basement, which is where the in-law is proposed, and there's nothing being done to the existing structure on the outside that would cause any changes to the house. I have a picture of the entryway, if you guys want it, if that helps.
You'll see the picture. Yeah, if you want to grab it, Mr. Knackus.
That would be the dedicated access to that house, and then there's also a secondary entrance that would go through the garage that they would have a lock to. But that way, they have two points of egress. I know that's a big thing.
So Mr. Fark has let me know that the square footage is seven hundred and twenty-two square feet, and meets every, meets all the criteria for an in-law, as far as the technical Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Minkara?
So looking at the floor plan, am I reading it right, there is no bedroom?
It's a studio.
Studio.
Yep.
Ms. McKay?
Question. It's okay. Does that go, is the only access, does someone have to go downstairs? I don't know if I looked at-
Yes, so they would go down from a deck into like where the retaining wall is. The picture kind of shows it, and then they would enter back, but there's also a separate entrance, there's also a separate entrance through the garage.
Okay, so then there would be accessibility if somebody had a walking disability?
It would still be stairs.
It would still need stairs?
Yeah, it's still stairs.
Through the garage?
Correct.
Okay. Another question?
Yes.
Follow-up. How many stairs?
Three.
Three?
Yeah, three.
Okay, I'm just concerned with the ADA compliance piece of this. So if, God forbid, something happened and your mother needed a wheelchair, then-
The back steps could accommodate a deck, like a down ramp if we needed to.
Thank you. That's what I needed to hear.
Yep, I could build that if that happened.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions we have against? Yeah, I'll go through them, all right. So we just need, there is a, have you, are you aware the accessory-
I thought it was-
Okay, so the accessory dwelling unit-
This guy?
You had a copy of that, you sealed that?
Yep.
All right. I can go two ways. I can go through every item and get an affirmation, or I can get affirmation that he's complying with all those. Is there any member that'd like me to go through every line item?
He does meet them all.
Okay, all right.
I think we've gone over it and-
All right, so what I need from you is just an affirmation that you have gone through all the accessory dwelling unit criteria, the nine of them, and that you comply with all nine.
Yep, I've gone through all nine, and I comply with all nine.
Okay, thank you very much. Is that satisfactory?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. You can have a seat. Thanks for coming. Is anybody else that'd like to speak in favor for this application? Come on up and give us, come on up.
Marguerite Johnson.
No, just, no, you have to come to the mic. Sorry, you have to, it's, just give us your name and address, and then take your time.
Marguerite Johnson, I live at 17 Woodland, just right next door to Andrew. Just a question, who can live in an in-law apartment? What is the law? What is the rule? Does it have to be-
Mr. Fark can speak?
Anybody.
Anybody, so it doesn't have to be a blood relative?
It used, that was the law up until June of 2017, and both the city and the state law changed, so now it doesn't have to be a blood or marriage relative, it could be anybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any, like to speak in favor of the application? All right, so we have a, we had a letter in favor, and we'll, this email, and it says, hello Kate. Kate is, works in the, in the-
Planning Department.
Planning Department. My name is Alan Lundquist, and I live at 13 Woodland Drive. I've spoken with Andrew, who recently purchased a home at 15 Woodland Drive. He has informed me of his plans to apply for variance to make a living space in the basement. I have no reservations about this plan. Sincerely, Alan Lundquist, of 15 Woodland Drive. All right, so with that, there's no other people here to speak in favor. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Okay, seeing none. I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw?
I think very straightforward, all the criteria met. I don't see any issues with it. I'm in support.
I would agree, you know, note that it's wholly contained within the residence, there'll be no external appearance at all.
Mr. Knackus?
I agree as well, there's no changes to the outside of the building, and it seems like a fairly straightforward application.
I have none. My one concern was ADA compliance, and that was answered, and so I am good with that.
Also, I think this is one of the easier ones. As far as the layout of the home, it's already kind of set up that way, so I'll support the application. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll do it.
Thank you, Mr. Minkara.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception request for Andrew Crocker, 15 Woodland Drive, Sheet 53A, Lot 45, for a special exception from land use code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an accessory dwelling unit within an existing house in the R9 district. I think we find that it is listed in the table of permitted uses. We find that it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. It will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer, or any other municipal system. The special regulations are fulfilled, and we've had an affirmation to that effect. And it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of residents. As we noted, the proposed unit is wholly contained within the existing home.
Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Did you want to add the special regulations? Oh, did you? I am sorry.
That's right.
I apologize.
Okay.
All right, okay, so any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your application's been approved. Again, just be aware, there's that thirty-day window of appeal, but you can pull your permit at any time, okay? Thank you, thank you for coming. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number two. Going to open the public hearing for case number three. Case number three is Roger and Linda Pellerin, 3 Daniel Street. Roger and Linda Pellerin, owners 3 Daniel Street, Sheet 92, Lot 45, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-264, for a maximum accessory use area, forty percent permitted, hundred and four percent proposed to replace a sixteen-by-nineteen shed with a twenty-five-by-twenty-six storage building. It's in a GB zone Ward 4. Is anybody here to present that case? Is that you, sir? Come on up, give us your name. Yep, you're the only one left, so we're hoping it was you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Roger Pellerin, and I own the property at 3 Daniel Street, and also own the property in front there, Gate City Monument. That's my business there, that we run every day. So I'm seeking to build a building. I had the building inspector over to take a look at what I wanted to do, and he informed me of the setbacks and all this, and I never anticipated that because the house on the property is so small, only six hundred and fifty square feet, that only allows me forty percent to build my garage, which is not quite what I, what is there already, which is in really, really bad shape. It was built, very poorly constructed many, many years ago, and it's definitely an eyesore. You might have in your package there if they gave you a picture. Yes, we do. Okay, good, good. So pictures worth a thousand words, I guess, so. And then all the things that I've accumulated over the years that have to stay outside my, you know, cement mixer and things that we use for everyday, everyday business, I'd like to be able to put it undercover, and that's why I'm looking to, like to make it a little bit bigger. And also, the back corner of that was all like brush and everything like that, so we've cleaned that out of there now and utilized, keeping, maintaining the proper setbacks with, we'd like to utilize that space for the new building. That's pretty much all that I can say about it, I guess, unless you have any questions.
No, so again, bottom line is you're gonna demolish this completely to the ground-
Yeah.
And replace it with something brand-new, obviously a little bit bigger to meet your needs.
Right. The building inspector, one of the questions I was is can I build it on a slab? And he, you know, they have a way of haunching the sides of it there, and with, and he informed me that I could do that, so that was hoping that that would be the plan, so that's, if this goes forward, that would be my plan to do that.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Shaw?
Just a confirmation, I'm pretty sure from the plans and everything, but we just usually like to ask about this. It's just gonna be the single-story structure, no second story, no living space above.
No, 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 no. It's gonna be the size of the building there with trusses for the roof support, and be all open inside, one garage door and one small door to get in.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, gonna try to make it look like the little house there, okay?
It's gonna be as big as the little house.
It is, it is.
A little bigger, absolutely. Maybe bigger, yes.
Yeah, hundred and four percent.
That little garage that's there, by the way, I don't know if anybody had a car and they parked it in there, they, once they got it in there, I can't see how they could open the doors to be able to get out of the car, so.
Find out of the trunk.
Any other questions for the applicant? I think we're all set, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so there is no one else in the audience tonight, so I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw?
I mean, this is, you know, I feel like I say this most of the times with these because it seems that's the case, but this is almost like the extreme. This house is really small. And then the other thing is, actually, you know, clearly, the, you know, while the structure will be larger than before, it's also pretty clear that they were already had more than the forty percent with the existing structure, so I don't think that there's gonna be any significantly notable difference by having the larger structure, and certainly, I think, the fact that it will be newer, new construction, and, you know, replace something that's really in obvious disrepair, will I think only be a net benefit anyhow, but it's, I think the, you know, while the percentage seems extremely high, it's clear that it's actually incrementally not as significant as it might seem on the surface, so I think this is totally reasonable, and I have no problem with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Fark?
Also, this one is meeting the setback where the other one did not, so it's making it a little bit more conforming with that respect. Yeah, three feet to six.
I completely agree with you, Mr. Shaw. I don't see it any other way either, so. Anybody else?
I would agree also. I would just also note that, you know, despite the hundred and ten percent, the garage that's proposed is actually very standard in terms of size. It's very typical, you know, for what you'd see for a two-car garage.
You all set? Is that Mr. Minkara? Ms. Boris, yeah, you all set?
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Shaw?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Roger and Linda Pellerin, 3 Daniel Street. The request is for variance from land use code Section 190-264 for maximum accessory use area, where forty percent is permitted, a hundred and four percent is proposed, and this is to replace a sixteen-foot by nineteen-foot shed with a twenty-five-foot by twenty-six-foot storage building. It's in the GB zone Ward 4. The area variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property. Basically, it is replacing an existing structure, but bringing it up to something much more in repair with new construction, and pretty much of a stand- and pretty much of a standard two-car garage size. The primary challenge with this situation is that it's a property with an extremely small, single-family home, and thus, the size of the structure ends up being very large for percentage-wise compared to that for the accessory use. I'd also note that the existing structure already was significantly over the 40% previously what was in place. So I think it's, the net increase is actually not as, not that significant. It was also noted that the setbacks will now be met, whereas right now, the front setback is actually encroaching by the existing structure. So the, it's within the spirit and ten of the ordinance. I'd note maybe slightly further that this is one of these cases where if this garage-type structure was attached to the house, there'd be no issue, and it's simply another case of where it is freestanding, it ends up falling into this accessory use requirement. There's no indication that there'll be any negative effect on property values for surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served, and I make a motion, make the motion to approve this area variance.
Seconded by Mr. Canakis, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, sir, your application's been approved. All right, so just be aware, again, there's a 30-day window of appeal we talked about, okay? Have a good night, sir. All right, with that, I'll close the public, the public meeting for case number three. We have two sets of meeting minutes. The first set is from August 27th, meeting August 27th. Does anybody have any comments, corrections, issues with those meeting minutes? No, no, anybody? No, okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the August 27th, 2019 meeting minutes?
Who's voting, Justice?
Oh, so, I'm sorry, so we'll go back, we'll keep going around. So it would be, it would be now Ms. Boris with Mr. Mccara.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mccara. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, so this time it'll be Mr. Mccara and Mr. Canakis. So we have meeting minutes now from the September 10th meeting. Does anybody see any issues, questions, or corrections or comments with those?
Motion to approve.
All right, so the motion on the floor is to approve the September 10th, 2019 meeting minutes, seconded by Mr. Shaw. All those in favor? I mean, any discussion? Oh, none?
Wait a minute, whom, I thought Mr. Shaw made the motion.
No, Mr. Mccara made the motion, Mr. Shaw seconded it.
I probably jumped the gun a little bit.
But I thought, Mr., who's voting in this one?
It would be Mr.?
Yeah.
We, there's two sets of meeting minutes that we're doing. Did you get the first one?
Yeah.
Okay. So it would be Mr. Mccara made the motion, Mr. Shaw seconded it. And it will be Mr. Mccara and Mr. Canakis who is voting. Sorry, I was probably moving too fast for you.
Okay.
So are we? So, so we were at, whether there was any discussion? There was none, all those in favor? Okay, so that's five to nothing, so that's Mr. Mccara and Mr. Canakis. And I should be calling those out when we're having this, so I apologize for that.
That's okay.
All right, so those are the meeting minutes. Now we have, we have the new agenda on your desk. Does anybody see any regional impact?
No.
No, I don't either.
Okay, so, no regional impact. All right. All right. Was there a reason for this to?
Just as an FYI.
Okay, all right. All right, so, so on our desk was the Heritage Rail Trail East. There's a meeting to discuss the rail trail project. It's going to be tomorrow, October 9th, at 6:00 PM in this auditorium. So it's just informational, just an informational brochure. Okay, is there any other discussion? Anything else anybody wants to bring up? Mr. Shaw? Okay, motion is to adjourn. Seconded by Mr. Canakis. And Ms. Boris, you're voting on this one, all right? So motion on the floor is to adjourn, all those in favor? Okay, that's five to nothing.
7:05.
At 7:05. Thank you.